Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Council members, city officials, and our home audience. I'd like to welcome you to the November 27th City Council meeting. We do have nine items on our agenda this evening. At this time, Mr. Paulson, would you continue with the roll called members?
Tattman.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Neal.
Here.
Kearney.
Here.
Hines.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Florina.
Corcoran.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. At this time, if everybody would please stand for the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes of the previous meeting have been distributed for review. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes? And Mrs. Kearney?
I do have a chance.
Okay.
Mr. Christie's first name is spelled A-L-A-N.
Mr. Who?
Christie, Alan Christie.
What page is that on, please?
Oh, it's page 1224.
How is this still?
A-L-A-N.
A-L-A-N. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Everybody agreed with the minutes with that correction? We have a motion by Mrs. Kearney, seconded by. Uh, Ms. Gray, do you want to call to accept the minutes, please?
Tattman. Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
We have accepted the minutes from the previous meeting. At this time, we have our reports from our committees. Uh, Mr. Cole?
The Finance Committee has two items on tonight's agenda. One is item number three, which is a second reading, and it is an ordinance to appropriate $5,487 for the purchase and installation of LED lighting in auditor's office. And at the appropriate time, I would ask that we please waive the three read rule so that we can begin this project and get it done before the end of the year. Uh, we also have item number five on tonight's agenda, which is at first reading, which is to appropriate $130,414.69 for various end of the year expenses. And to make sure that we can pay all these bills, I will ask that at the appropriate time, we please waive the three read rule. Mr. Florina could not be here tonight due to illness, so I am filling in for him, and I'm going to report for Safety Services, which has item number six, which is at first reading, and is to accept and appropriate $54,769.48 received from Ohio Mental Health and Addiction Services for the probation department, Chillicothe Municipal Court, and authorizing the court to participate in the OMHAS program in 2017-2018 fiscal year. And so that we can accept this money, I will ask at the appropriate time to waive the three read rule. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. As the whole audience can tell, we're still having camera issues. Hopefully that will continue every time we move it. Uh, it is next committee would like to report.
I'd like to report on Community Affairs in reference to resolution second reading opposed to construction of an onsite waste disposal facility at the U.S. Department of Energy, Poison's Gas and Diffusion Plant, South Spiceton, Ohio. I would like to act that that did not be read tonight.
Motion.
Yes.
You want a motion to commit it at this point?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to commit it.
Commit or not read?
Not read. Not read.
Commit. If you.
Not read.
Okay, if we don't read it, I cannot call review session on it. If you commit it, then I can call review session.
I don't understand that because it stays on the agenda. It just is not read. It's not taken off the agenda by a do not read motion.
So it doesn't let, it doesn't let us have further discussion on it?
Yes.
I'm sorry, we've had review sessions before there was even an ordinance or resolution on the agenda.
Exactly, before the agenda.
Once it gets. So you're in charge, go ahead, Al, or you want to, Bruce? Excuse me.
I would not like to have it read, and then we will have a committee meeting that will be announced.
I'd like to point out that commit says that a subsidiary motion to commit allows pending legislation to be carefully further investigated by a council committee prior to council's action. And if you commit it, the motion to commit keeps the legislation at the order that it is committed at. It will return to council's agenda at the same reading as when it was committed, as long as we do not suspend any of the three day receipt rule. Uh, and then it will be come, it will be listed at the end of the current agenda until it's brought back home. Uh, if it's not read, it doesn't say anything about reviewing the subject matter any further, which the commit does.
Question on the action?
The difference is, I would not like to have to have to bring it back on. I would like for it to stay. So that's the difference.
It's, it stays at the same reading.
Question on the action?
Yes.
If there is a change in the legislation, which means it changes the intent, what does it do then?
If that's the case, then we would either amend the legislation, or it would be up to the committee where we, where the legislation would go at that point.
So it doesn't change the action anywhere?
Yeah, the, it doesn't, is it committing, by committing it, it just refers it, it stops it until there is time to have additional investigation into it.
And it will not appear on the next meeting agenda at all.
Right.
Other than as committed legislation.
That's not what I'm asking for. I'm asking for it not to be read, and then I will ask for a committee meeting with the committee.
If you lay it on the table.
I'm not, I don't want to lay it on the table. I just don't want it read tonight.
It says it takes it from the agenda, but it doesn't say anything about doing any further review.
Okay.
We have had motions to not read items for the past 26 years I've been clerk of council, and this has never been interpreted as taking the legislation away from consideration by council at a review session or in further committee meetings. It simply does not get read that night, stays on the agenda for the next regular meeting, and on the agenda for the next regular meeting, it appears at second reading status. That's what we've done for 26 years. Now, if you're reading those rules differently, fine, but I don't think this council is aware of the fact that you have interpreted the rules different from what has been done for 26 years. And that's all I'm going to say on it.
Has there been review sessions while something's been?
Absolutely there have been.
While, while legislation is in process to be voted on?
Yes, sir.
I've never.
What is your problem with doing it the way it's always been done? I don't understand that.
The rules don't say here that I have the right to call review session if something is taken off the agenda, unless it's committed.
Ohio revised.
All right. I have a motion to not read tonight.
There's a question.
Do I have a, yes.
I just want a second to make this motion.
I have a second for that motion. We'll call on that motion.
Tattman. Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Okay. I will say that I don't have, I don't feel comfortable calling a review session on this because of the way the rules are written, but I or any three members of council can call a review session. So if there's three members of council that would like to go to call, get together to call review session, I welcome that because I myself, under the way we just went through this and the way I'm reading these rules, don't feel comfortable to call this review session.
I will be calling a committee meeting, and it's a committee meeting of three for this committee, and then at that particular time, we can decide whether or not we're going to do that.
So your committee then would call the review session?
Yes.
When it, when do you want to call the committee meeting?
Monday, the fourth.
And that's the time I plan on the review session, but now it will be another week or more before you'll be able to get a review session unless you call within a 24 hour period and then it's a couple of days after that.
Let me change that and make it this Wednesday. I think this three of us can get together this Wednesday.
We have a.
We have a budget meeting.
Okay, that would be a great time for us to have it before the budget meeting.
So 6:15?
6:15.
15 minutes?
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other reports that you'd like to give?
No one.
Okay, very good. Uh, anybody else have a report this evening? Uh, yes, Ms. Neal?
Development Committee has two items on tonight's agenda. Uh, number eight is to adopt amendment 2017-1 of the Ross County City of Chillicothe Thoroughfare Plan to reprioritize the State Route 159 widening project from intermediate to high priority status. Um, this is simply, uh, to approve a status change that the Thoroughfare Plan Committee made earlier this fall. They felt that the State Route 159 widening should move up on the priority list due to all the development in that area. Uh, there's no money requested, this is just to, um, to approve, to approve the reprioritization. Number nine is to create a designated outdoor refreshment area for downtown Chillicothe and the designated hotel areas on Bridge Street. Um, we have a public hearing this evening at 6:30. Uh, we have had two committee meetings on this, uh, resolution, and also two, um, public notices in the Gazette. Um, so this is, um, has been recommended by the Downtown Development Commission, and the purpose that they, they saw fit to, um, request this was to keep the barriers from being on the sidewalks, uh, so that they would remain pedestrian friendly and allow the restaurants to serve, um, alcohol with meals without having to have the big barriers. So, um, this, this will go all three reads, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Neal. Any other reports, Mr. Tattman?
Thank you, President Arnold. Uh, each area committee has two items on the agenda tonight. Uh, number one is to authorize a, a contract with Ross County Commissioners so we can have them do the commercial inspecting for any building done in 2018. Also, number four, and I would like to thank the Law Director's Office for getting this done so quickly, with the exception that we have to make some corrections on the legislation. The ordinance is for a repair of a street traffic control light in front of Chillicothe High School in Yawcandy and North Street, but we need to, and I need to, to call for amendment of the actual ordinance, and we need to make two corrections. And the first part of the ordinance, uh, it says repair of the street light located at Chillicothe High School in Yawcandy, but it should read traffic control device, not street light for $20,000. Also, in section one, it says street light located at Yawcandy. We need to change that to traffic control device. And at this time, I'd like to make a motion, please.
I have a motion by Mr. Tattman to make those two changes, seconded by Mrs. Gray. We'll call on that motion.
Tattman.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
And that, those changes have been approved?
Okay, and to go on with this, I'll also, uh, at the time that we read this, I'll probably request the waiver of three read rule so we can get this in take care quickly.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tattman. Yes, Ms. Neal?
I'm sorry, Development Committee had one other item on the agenda, and that was number seven. Um, and it's, uh, an item to appropriate $9,097 for the housing revolving loan fund, and this is, um, private rehab funds to be used to help fund and honor rehab projects through chip grant. So, um, this will ask for a wave of the three read rule.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any committee reports this evening? Any committee reports on any legislation that's not on the agenda tonight that you'd like to bring up? Not seeing any, then we will move on. We have reports of our, from our officials. Mayor Feeney?
Thank you, President Arnold. A couple of quick comments on tonight's agenda. Uh, I'd like to speak in support of the waiver of the three read rule and item number four tonight. That is an intersection that, that control box has gone out on us frequently over the past couple of years, and, uh, we had it outside, contractor come in and take a look, and it's time for a new system. They are expensive, uh, but especially given the, um, the traffic and the type of traffic, the volume of the traffic that intersection, um, it's important that we resolve that issue quickly, so would ask for your favorable, uh, vote on that item tonight. A follow-up comment on item number eight, which Councilman Neal mentioned, um, one of the reasons, one of the additional reasons to prioritize that project at the top of the list is that, uh, if we go out and seek grants, um, and look for money, whether it's the county or the city or together, um, oftentimes granting agencies, whether it's ODOT or any other entity, may look to the prioritization of our current projects and rank, uh, our applications based on that. So this is the most likely project on the list, I think, to have action on it anytime near future, uh, so prioritizing that for this body may seem insignificant, but could open us up to significant grant funding. So when it's time for vote, um, I'd ask for your favorable vote on number eight. Uh, moving on to some items that recently were covered, um, there was a, uh, Route 159 resurfacing project that council appropriated money to, uh, have our matching portion with ODOT, um, within the last month or two. Uh, that project went out to bid. The bids came in much higher than ODOT was expecting, and the project was actually rejected. It'll be resold at a later date. The appropriation that we have, uh, remains with, with ODOT, the project will go forward, but they came back to us and said with the new, with the actual project bid that came in, we would have needed to chip in an additional $26,000. Uh, so not only us, but, but ODOT sort of flinched at that price, and after talking it through, um, we have rejected that bid and will put it out next year, hopefully for a better price. Leaf pickup continues. Last week, uh, probably 50% of the leaves came down. Um, it was a busy week, and, you know, with the holidays a boot, uh, we are probably still doing some catch-up from last week, so please be patient with us, but, um, if we happen to miss your street last week, don't hesitate to give us a call, let us know how we're doing. We're through, I believe, half the budget, uh, presentations. There'll be two more, uh, tomorrow night at 6:30 and the next night at 6:30 on Wednesday, um, and then we'll do a wrap-up session that will have sort of a summary document that has all of the expenses and the remaining portion which you haven't seen yet is the revenue projections. At this rate, um, in order to be thorough and cautious with time, it would appear that the first read would be at the second meeting in December, and that the passage then would be at the first council meeting in January. That's if we have normally scheduled meetings. Um, if council would want to get it to three reads, we could always cowl a special meeting, but, um, just giving you that heads up. If we didn't do it that way, we'd be looking at a review of the budget next week and then getting it to the Law Director's Office, uh, for getting it on the agenda. That coming Monday would be a tight squeeze. It's one of the, uh, lengthier documents, and we've had to amend it in the past, so we'll be looking at, and the auditor could follow up too, but I, I'm thinking it looks like two reads, second meeting in December and then first meeting in January. And then I'll close on a happy note. Thank you to everybody who came downtown on Saturday night, Small Business Saturday, Christmas tree lighting. Uh, I don't think the weather could have been better. Downtown is packed. Every year we do this, we, um, we, we learn more and we try to do better. Next year, I think we'll look at blocking off Water Street, uh, making it a little bit safer. Uh, the fireworks were really a neat touch, so thank you to the Chamber of Commerce and everybody else who contributed, um, to making that a really special night, and it was just great to see so many people downtown. With that, I will conclude my report.
Thank you, Mayor Feeney. Appreciate that very much. And, yeah, the fireworks was a nice touch with the lighting.
If you knew it was coming. I'm told that a few people didn't know the fireworks were coming on Saturday night.
I happened to be at work, and I heard it was boom, 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 boom outside, and I went out looking.
Awoke them up.
It was really great, yeah.
Turbulent slumber.
Uh, next is our auditor, Ms. Crystal Sutner.
First two items I would discuss tonight, item number three on the agenda, that's to appropriate $5,487. Um, I just wanted to show my support to waive the three read rule on that so we can get the project started and get a rebate from AEP, and it would be approximately about $900. So that's the first item. The second item is, um, item number five, and that's to appropriate $103,000 to pay for various shearing expenses. This is due to expenditures that either exceeded the original appropriation or to cover budget adjustments that were made. Some of the costs that will cover is engine airials, postage, fuel, police and fire pension. And then, as Mayor Feeney said, um, we are currently working on the budget. We'll have two more budget meetings Tuesday and Wednesday, and then, um, do an overall review of the revenue and expenses together. And that concludes my report.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Sutner. And our law director, Ms. Rutherford?
Thank you, President Arnold. I don't have anything to report on today, but I, I will say that the, uh, the downtown open house was very nice, and so thank you to everybody that had anything to do with putting it on. That's it.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Moving on, um, we move on to our public participation. Uh, we do have a sign-in sheet for our public participation, which I have up there. We do need your name and address, so when I call your name, please step up to the microphone. Please give it, uh, some of these, I notice I don't have addresses, so I will ask for your address. Counsel Rule 22, not 21, but 22, does limit each speaker to a five-minute presentation and a total, uh, limitation of 15 minutes per subject. I will silently indicate when you have approximately one minute left on your, uh, presentation, which should give you ample time to summarize. If anybody wishes to speak or add anything, if we have time, after we go through the signup sheet, you can still do so. Uh, all you have to do is, again, is step up and give your address, name and address to, uh, uh, so we can have it for our records. Um, starting off, at the, uh, top of the sheet here, I have a Mr. Dennis Carr to talk.
Uh, good evening. My name's Dennis Carr. I've met some of you on the tour. I'm, uh, the president and project director of War BWXT. I represent, uh, the 2,000 of the workers at the, uh, at the Portsmouth Gases Diffusion Project. Uh, I'm the project director on the D and D project there, and I know that, uh, listening earlier, I think that this motion, obviously, the discussion on the resolution is going to be held at another night. Here, today, I was really coming forward here just to ask for, that the do, care, and review, uh, be, uh, be brought forward before any resolution is passed. Again, I think we, we spend a lot of time and a lot of effort trying to maintain consistent funding and forward progress on our project, again, looking out for the welfare of our workers, and the issue that you have in front of you with the resolution is an important issue. I believe that it also has the potential to have a significant impact on my workforce. And so what I'm asking for is that due technical review, due consideration be given to it before any resolution is passed. The Department of Energy, uh, I'm not a representative of the Department of Energy, I'm a, uh, I'm a private, we're a private company, but the Department of Energy has spent about four and a half years getting to the decision that they have, and that decision being a balance between disposal on-site and shipment off-site. And that did not come by happenstance chance. There was a lot of good technical review that was, and a good technical thought that's been put into this, uh, and there was a lot of public review and a lot of public input into this process. The process that we arrived at, the solution that was arrived at, I feel is a good balance with the many factors that have been considered. Certainly, though, the most significant, the most overriding is one of safety of the facility, safety of the individuals, safety of the community, long-term performance of the on-site disposal facility. That was the number one priority of that overall review and the overall study. Uh, we spent a lot of time as a contractor, we were charged as a contractor with doing a very thorough investigation and analysis of the various options, and while we were not a decision-maker, we certainly stand behind the analysis that was performed. That analysis has been summarized in a, in a document. I know that there has been a lot of, uh, public commentary out there, but none of it has been focused on the actual document that supports the decision, which is the remedial investigation feasibility study. Yes, it's a long document, but it's a some 4,000-page document, uh, but it's, it summarizes over four years of investigation and analysis that was performed in order to be able to arrive at this decision. And what I'm asking for is the ability for us to be able to bring forward some of that technical review, some of that technical analysis that supported the decision. As far as the safety of the facility, you have in front of you, which is some cross-sections. I know there's a lot of misnomers out there, misinformation that's out there. I know this characterizes a dump. Clearly, I feel a lot of engineering has going into this facility. What you have before you is a representation of the liner and capping system. Uh, one of my, uh, coworkers here will get up and talk a little about that in a minute. But what is going into this, there's actually 10 individual layers of isolation that, that will isolate the waste from the environment. Below that is the geology. You've heard some presentations a couple of weeks ago from Johnny Rising talking about the geology. The balance of, and that design with that geology presents a, presents a very safe environment, safe, uh, safe configuration for this waste for the long term. So what I'm asking for you today is to at least step back, think about the decision that you're making, think about its potential impact on my workforce, the 2,000 workers of the site. Uh, again, we spent a lot of time trying to make certain that we maintain an appropriate funding level, uh, that we have maintained an appropriate forward progress on our project. So all I'm asking for today is give us an opportunity to talk to you about the technical details of this project and to correct some of the misrepresentations that are out there in the public today. So with that, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. The, um, other name that I have on the list here is, I didn't get your address.
Oh, sorry. 327 Oak Street, Waverly.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I have, uh, Mr. Mark Johnson.
My name is Mark Johnson.
Your address? I didn't have it on the sheet, your address.
330 Red Bud Road, Chillicothe.
Thank you.
And, uh, I am privileged and honored to have be, be the Tri-State Building Trades Business Manager, and we represent about 25,000 construction workers in 33 counties and three states, and we're an umbrella group of construction labor unions, and we have 55 affiliated local unions that comes out, 14 international unions. But anyway, uh, out of the 2,000 workers there at the BOE site, about 110 of them are affiliated construction trades members, and right now, the majority of them are working on the disposal sale. And I've been involved at this site for many years, and my father came to this site. And my father came to this site in 1953 to work for Peter Peewitt, and he was the third man on the job. And he rolled over after the construction phase and went to work for Get Your Atomic and retired out of there after 36 years. And I had other members of my family working there, including myself. But anyway, as far as what I got to say is, I've been involved with the Department of Energy in my capacity prior to FLOR coming on the site. We had about 125 people working for Light of Parallax, that was the previous DND contractor. But when FLOR took over, it went, actually, the whole plant site was put into what's called DND. And that's when they started evaluating what we're going to do with the project, and no one rolled out the red carpet for a disposal cell, but it was discussed many, many times in many public meetings. And the big issue out there is Department of Energy hired a higher university to do a study, and they surveyed the people that lived in the board counties, and the overall result of that survey was the majority of the people want to see that site re-industrialized. And there's about 1,200 acres of prime, prime land out there that's got all the infrastructure in the world. However, there's existing landfills and plumes out there that are closed, and really, they don't have to do anything to them. And we compete for funding at this project. You read about the newspaper, every year, we're competing for funding to try to keep people working and to move this project forward. And today, it's running behind, and there's little wonder. We don't have, never have enough money. We have to compete with other DOE sites. But anyway, we come up with the, after many, many discussions, Dennis being involved in Joel and Vince Adams, Joel's prior guy, and they come up with what was called the future vision. And the future vision is we, the disposal cell, not on the 1,200 acres, but off where it's located today, and included at the time in the future vision plan was digging up the existing plumes and disposals and the existing disposal cells. These existing disposal cells, to my knowledge, has no liner whatsoever, and many of our members was involved in the early '90s, where they was very cars, trucks and everything else, and these things was running and still had gasoline and oil in them. But there's a lot of things in there, and to dig all these up is very labor-intensive, and it's going to provide the highest number of jobs for the community. Now, our area is fairly prosperous, but Portsmouth, Ohio is anything but prosperous, and they need jobs in the worst way. And that's what I would like me to consider is the jobs at stake and our membership's jobs at stake. And I believe that that's what we really need to step back and consider, the people's jobs and trying to get future funding. And if you wanted to include a resolution to dig up the existing plumes and the existing disposal cells, I'm all for that. But that's my message, is please consider the people's jobs and these families' lives at stake. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. The next name I have on the list here is Portia Bolger.
Good evening.
I don't have your address.
City council members, mayor, and our, the city officials.
Excuse me, I don't have your address. Can you do write it down? Your address?
I'll write it down. I don't probably, on, just being live streamed, I don't, can I give it to you without?
For?
Okay, 228.
We put it in the minutes, that's why we asked for that.
All right, friend. 228.
I'm sorry, we're not trying to offend you, just give us your address, please.
228.
What?
228, 22, State Route 104. And just for the record, Donald Trump Jr. has attacked me publicly, and it's really hard for me to give my address down.
I'm sorry.
I know.
We're just trying to do our job.
Anyway, thank you for letting me speak. I'm here today because I'm extremely concerned about Mother Earth, I'm concerned about being a good neighbor, I'm concerned about the fact that if there, it isn't about if there'll be a leak, it's about when there'll be a leak. And when there is a leak at this waste dump, it'll take nine days to get to Chillicothe. Did you know that aquifer water runs south to north? Do you know that we, as a city, should really be concerned about that? Because this is about our drinking water, we can't live without water. We also hear this fine man speaking about jobs. Well, guess what? We can make jobs, we can have green jobs if they don't kill people. We can take care of our people in this community that work in, at this facility, and we can take care of the people that live in other areas that come to work there, because we do need to take care of jobs. We also need to take care, great care, in thinking about the future economy for Southern Ohio, for Appalachia, for where we were born and raised, and about what type of future and legacy we are going to leave for our children. We don't live that far from a fault line, folks. Southeast Ohio has earthquakes. I didn't have enough time to figure out how far away that fault line is from where this particular facility may go. But we've got things that I don't have the capacity to actually stand here and tell you from a learned, peer-reviewed type of study. But what I do know is about a woman named Karen Silkwood. Anyone ever hear of Karen? You know, they ran her off the road and killed her because she came forth and told the truth about the lies that the Department of Energy told way back in the '70s. Do you believe that Donald Trump cares about us? Do you believe that this man named Scott Pruitt, who is the head of the EPA of the United States of America, cares about us, a climate denier? So, I would ask you all to think about being good neighbors. I would ask you to think about the importance of the type of statement that we're going to leave to our community and our neighboring communities and to our children. If we can have the courage, and I really want to thank Councilwoman Neal for standing, for recycling, if we can have the courage to do that, we can sure as hell have the courage to stop Southern Ohio from becoming a nuclear waste dump. So, I'd like to leave you with this. Let's be good neighbors. Let's follow the golden rule. Let's love thy neighbor as thyself. And then, I'd like to end it with Mayor Feeney. Do you support this ordinance? I heard it earlier urging for a yes vote for something else. I was busy getting my notes together, but can we hear you say that you support this ordinance and that you will urge us a yes vote on that as the leader of our community? Can we hear you say that?
Not at this time.
Wow.
Thank you, Ms. Bolger. Next name I have on the list, and we're getting down to where we have, oh, about 12 minutes. There are four more, five more names. I'm going to have everybody shorten their presentations to try to, if you can, try to keep them brief so that we can get everybody to talk so as best you can. Dennis Foreman is the next name I have on the list, and I don't have your address either, sir.
So, my name is Dennis Foreman, 115 Fifth Street, Pighton, Ohio, 45661. I've been here several times, and they talk about competing for funding. My town has been a good host to DOE for over 60 years, and my people have asked for nothing, nothing. The one time we ask for something, out comes everybody to tell us how safe something is, when we're talking about a few percentage points difference in price to ship it off. When he talks about the record decision, 4,000 pages, I have a copy. You want one, I'll give you one. You can borrow mine. There's options, and one of the options is to ship off. Did you know that this group, same back here, Mr. Carr's group, number five in the last five years, number one in the United States for shipping? Am I correct, number one? Thank you, sir. Number one, for shipping. There's nothing wrong with shipping this off to the desert where the aquifer can be 1,000 feet, high and dry. Why wouldn't we deal with low and wet? I've been here before many times with you guys, and it says jobs. A laborer doesn't care if they're tearing down a building or they're building a road, building a building, whatever they're doing, as long as they have a job. I agree. 110 jobs building a nuclear waste dump that we have to have in our area for 1,000 years? You're telling me that the United States of America is going to build something that lasts 1,000 years? We can't even make our Navy ships go around other Navy ships right now. It's kind of scary. Lake White's leaking twice, we're coming down, we still don't have that issue solved. So, guys, when you make decisions, the last time these guys here, I wasn't at the meeting. There's some things said to you that they was going to clean things up. It was in the November 16th issue in the Chillicothe Gazette. I wasn't here, but I read the paper. Well, they had a misleading statement. I had a nice discussion in SSAB that that was wrong, that they are basically telling you they're cleaning them all up. There's no mechanism to clean those up. You can read the November 8th issue, and I'll send it to you guys, you need to see this, in the News Watchman, where is it, the SSAB, which is Site-Specific Advisory Board. Every one of these sites have one of these, where they said, Ohio EPA asked them, is that true, they're going to clean all these up? There's nothing for that, no. It's like pumpkin tree, that's what we're doing already, they're already closed. He said, well, they're closed. They'll come up and tell you the things that, well, they, he said, yeah, I want to clean what? You know what, we do too, but misrepresentation of the fractures. Well, we're sorry, we misrepresented those. That scares my town to death. How about 2015, BWXT, which is part of FLOR now, had an incident there. They were fined by the government, and they were taken off the project. So, now you got Mid-American Conversion taking care of Duff Six. Oh, yeah, if you want more time to talk about things, we can have a lot of fun. I have a lot of information for you, because now BWXT got taken off that because they got fined by the government. I have the document here. The site director said that, then they said something, I think it was Jack Williams back here, no, it's Jack Williams, about 70, he spoke for Ohio EPA, about 70 feet, that's a misnumber two. What we're going, are we going with the 20-foot that they had in the record decision? Are we going with 70 feet? I'm kind of confused. We can have a really good talk. They say call it a dump. I asked Ohio EPA, is radioactive material going to be in this? Yes. And then Eric Roberts, the leader of the meeting, if nuclear material's going in, it could be called a nuclear dump. So, it can be called a nuclear dump, it can be called a radioactive waste dump. And what you guys did with recycling, that's great, but my town, all we're simply asking is to be neighbors with you guys, to help support us. We had an independent study. They might say, oh, skewed the data and all this, but they wouldn't be here to talk to you if they wasn't nervous that you guys would actually support your neighbors. We should stand united. The world is watching this. I just got back from San Antonio, Texas, Energy Communities Alliance. They're paying attention to decisions we make here. I, for one, will not put my name, Dennis Foreman will not put his name on a 1,000-year dump. Nuclear radioactive waste dump. Well, it's only low radioactive waste. I'm sorry, but I'm not going to do that. Paducah is watching. Their officials talk to me, they're scared to death. They're watching for us. Why would we want to put nuclear waste in our community? Is that going to bring jobs, more jobs in the future? Do you have kids? You have grandkids? You want them to have a job? You want them to be proud of the decisions you made? The decisions you make right now, rolling the public thing here, rolling a camera there, your friends are listening, your neighbors listening, we need to make the right decision. Hanover, New York, Chuck Schumer, he's supporting that town, they're shipping things, getting the town money. What's Pike in getting? What's Pike in getting? A nuclear waste dump. We do not want it. All we need is your support. We appreciate you, and thank you for allowing me to come here. You are my friends and neighbors. I spend more time in this town than these guys do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foreman. Next name I have on the list, and we have a little bit of time, I can extend it somewhat so we can get through the people on the list. Is Christie, I cannot.
Renner.
Renner, okay, sorry.
That's 2427 DeBoer Road and 202 South. Thanks, Steve. I'm sorry to see Joel isn't here, he's my councilman, but, and I tend to kind of get a squirrel and do other things, so I put my thoughts down here and my notes that I want to talk to you about, so I'm going to read for a minute. Most of you tonight in this room do not know me, but I might be the person that has worked harder for Southern Ohio with no recognition in this room, and I did not do it to blow my own horn, but because I love Southern Ohio and the people in it. I've tried to set an example for my daughters and grandchildren, that one person can make a difference. When the Gazette article came out stating the SSAB board members connected to the site with vested personal interest in it rather than residents without those plant ties, I took offense at the statement because I was one of those original board members. I was and still am a Chillicothe resident, and at the time, I was working for WGI URS Group as a program manager and area representative for WGI. I had applied for the board because of a recommendation by Congressman Gene Smith. She had urged me to apply because of my vocal opinion of the future cleanup of the Fort site. You see, I was concerned that a multi-billion dollar cleanup would not integrate the workers and companies in our areas. Companies would come in and spend what little money they could throw into the community, and then the bulk of the spending would be funneled back into whatever community the parent company was from. That was how the game is played in Oak Ridge, Lawrence Livermore, et cetera. She expressed having someone that had that type of vision on the board and agreed with me. I took offense at the plant worker vested interest, and yes, I work for the plant now, but only because someone from WGI attended one of my MCSE classes, I knew my IT experience would benefit a project they were working on. I was naive at the time to think, yes, it would be better to work at the plant because it was closer to home and less political than higher education. How naive I was. You see, before courts, I was the adult computer enrichment manager for outreach services at Shawnee State University, where I helped develop the Microsoft Engineering Cisco A+ Network Office classes for the area. In that capacity, Congressman Strickland came to me because he was concerned that Governor Taft's new IT initiative was leaving out Southern Ohio. Funding in an amount of $2 million per district in Ohio was set aside to build IT awareness and development for marketing in the state, leaving out the southern half of Ohio, which included Ross, Pike and Sayota. I've visited over 10 counties, and personally, this was beyond my 30-hour-per-week grant hours that kept my IT department running. I talked to chambers, community groups, mayors, councilmen to make sure that we were not going to be left off the map. In June 2000, at the same time, the other four districts were awarded the grant, we were proud to accept a grant for the IT AAO. My next volunteer project was because I saw a vision and a way to mark within our area to show other counties in Ohio what we had going for us. I worked with Christina Lynch at Congressman Strickland's office to develop the 2001 Technology Conference. I brought in all the IT-related firms in Southern Ohio and invited area representatives and business groups at Turboose to have small classes sort of a leadership for IT. This led me also to work with various technology groups in the state, including Access Appalachia, Career Exploration for Women, et cetera, et cetera. In other words, I was not on the board to further my nuclear career. If anything, it probably hurt me more than helped, it didn't matter, I wanted the best for my community. As Tolstoy would say, the most difficult subject to be explained to the most slow-witted man or woman if he has not formed any idea of them already, but the simplest thing cannot be made clear to the most intelligent man if he is firmly persuaded that he already knows without a shadow of doubt what is laid before him. The more I worked my job at the plant and that I studied and learned the history and understanding the laws and regulations, the more I grew. It was my position as configuration manager, supporting Beckham Jacobs, that I first understood the landfills, the plumes, the chemical radiation health and environmental hazards of the site.
You have one minute.
Did you know when these sites were first developed, it was regulated and nothing could leave the plant site? Getting down to this, do you guys know that the worst, I'll go to my thoughts, my summary comments. Did you know the worst plume in Southern Ohio is? According to a discussion with the Ohio EPA scientists that I had working on the plumbing and environmental issues in the area, it's under the old Warever plant. Compared to all the gas substitution plants, over which Purdue and Fort, which is cleanest, we wore because we laid on a bed of clay. This came from the EPA scientist, the one that had worked to set the Atomic Energy Commission apart. Anyhow, did you know what cost to clean up a nuclear landfill? And while that is... And while that entails, because I was a regular engineer at Westinghouse Hementite Site in Fences, Missouri, it can cost a hundred and forty-six million for only twenty-eight acres of land. I was the person that at the time, working with Maria Galanti at the court, at, on the board, that I knew we had these landfills out there and I knew what they were going to do to our region and everything. I knew leaving it in there, how we could clean up the site, the landfills were left there. How could we market this site? Oak Ridge had left their landfills in the area and I think as a way to market, that is an industrial site, it hurt us. Between Fernal and us, we decided as a community, all of us, to industrialize the site. Not to leave it as a.
Thank you.
Anyhow.
Thank you.
I'll just turn to the letter of the editor.
Okay, we have three more people that would speak on firm believer and having everybody having the chance to have public participation and having the right to speak. However, I will, I can, as council president, extend the time. I will, but I'm going to limit the time from the five minutes. Uh, the other three people to speak, I'd like for you to try to take no more than two minutes if you do come up, if you would please. I have an Elizabeth Lamerson on the list, please.
Good evening. Um, I, there's been many numbers and, and information that's been thrown around here. One thing that, you know, I heard Dennis Carr mention was that there's been many, um, public meetings. I am a fence-line neighbor and I have participated in every, um, public meeting and public comment period. I actually asked the question during the public comment period, was the bedrock fractured under the onsite disposal cell? The answer that I got from DOE was very clear, which was that below twenty feet, the, the bedrock was found to be intact with no cracks or fractures. That was a very clear answer to me. There are these documents that's four thousand plus pages. The Department of Energy created something that was put into layman's terms that said that information, that below twenty feet, there were no cracks or fractures. That's what the public read. That was the information that DOE gave us to look at, as opposed to reading through the four thousand-plus-page document. That to me is very sad because the information that they put out there was incorrect from the beginning. Now, I've heard many people, including Ohio EPA, DOE, say rely, rely on the design. The design can fail. The Keystone Pipeline was not created or was not designed to leak. It did. What happens if this landfill leaks? You know, this is not oil going into the, into the environment. It's radioactive hazards, toxic wastes that is going into our drinking water, your drinking water. Um, the people that have, that I have found that have spoken in support of this landfill were all paid to be here. They were either on DOE or FPP payroll. I am a concerned citizen. I am getting nothing from this, but I want a better place to live for my children and future generations of Southern Ohio. You know, that, it does not just include Pikeville. It does not just include Warever. You know, Chillicothe is affected, Fort Smith is affected, we're all affected. And we just need to make sure that we, um, make the right decision and oppose onsite disposal because it's just not the right place for it to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I have a, on the list now, a JD Cho. Chow?
Chu. Thank you, President Arnold. I would like to just say very simply that there are a lot of misinformation out there. And I look forward to the technical review and hopefully we will have enough time to present all the detailed information so that a council member can have a very informed decision. And in terms of what we just heard this evening, um, for example, the water was flowing north from Pikeville to Chillicothe in nine days? That's not correct. Okay, the water started moving south in this whole region, two million years ago, okay? And in terms of fracture, this picture is on page ninety-two of that four thousand pages. And visually, you find the extent of the fractures. And that's our starting point of our evaluation, engineering design and model simulation to see if we build something with a liner and cover in this location, how much of the suffering improvement we need to implement in order to have a viable technical solution for disposal. And that doesn't mean anything to go in there. After we do the best we can to improve the geology, provide an engineering design, to create a barrier for any additional water to come in, any water to leak out, we still have very selective, very stringent limit for what can go in there, okay? We even consider two thousand-year stone event, which had eight inches of rainfall in twenty-four hours. We even consider a earthquake magnitude that's never experienced at this region, that probably won't happen in two thousand, but we evaluate that. All of that will incorporate into our design and in our simulation. And based on that, we determine that only about zero point three percent of radioactive inventory can put in there. And that's why we think that's a balanced approach and it could be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for this short time, for everybody. Um, and I have Tracy Lamerson.
I just want, first of all, say thank you and, um, so you can travel probably next week. Um, my name is Tracy Lamerson. I'm a resident of Pike County. I'm going to teach at Union Yoder in Ross County. And I'm here again about this site, this is the second time here. I'm not paid to do so. This is on my, on my own and my own time. Um, the issue of this onsite disposal is really about risk. It is easy for everyone to talk for us and about us. The risk is obviously centered on us. It will be next to us, our neighbors and our families. Although the ancillary economic impacts extend outward, the risk is primarily laid at our doorstep and your backyard. That is why you see solid opposition from those most impacted. Pikeville, Wareverly, Seal Township, Scioto Township, Scioto Valley Schools, Pike County Health Department, Pike County Auditor, Pike County Sheriff, Pike County Treasurer, Pike County Recorder, Pike County Clerk, of Courts, and now the Jackson City Schools. We all know how risk averse the DOE is. They are constantly focused on safety and risk minimiz, risk minimization. All we hear about is their safety culture. What is their concern for our risk, our safety? Where is the concern for our resident that is a thousand and seven feet away? The issue of the misrepresentations from DOE regarding bedrock are well documented, documented and DOE has admitted the same. And, and that is possibly the biggest misrepresentation of all. Our citizens were misled and at a minimum should have had the benefit of accurate information on the most important aspect of onsite disposal. Uh, we all understand the jobs. We all want jobs to stay in Pike County. Uh, we want the trades to have work. Um, and onsite waste disposal is going to limit those jobs. We need to see this, we need to see this job outlook from FLOR. They have it all planned out for years. Ask for that because you need to see that. See what the job is all about. Um, by now, if not all of you, most of you have been approached by people influenced by FLOR DOE and you're experiencing what we have in Durham Pike County. A well-oiled orchestrated effort to discredit anyone in opposition. This council is now experiencing what we experienced for years. A Fortune five hundred company's political machine helping on maximizing profits and leaving us in their wake.
Thank you.
This, um.
Thank you.
Oh, I just have one more paragraph. Is that okay?
Go ahead.
Okay, DOE and FLOR can and will pull out all the stuffs. They can bring in these larger-than-life posters. They can give four-hour tours and they can bring in fifty salaried personnel to tell you how great it is. They can even lie about pulling the funding and cutting jobs. We all know that's not their, their, they can't do that. That's Congress's job. However, we are the people that live here permanently. We're the people that will have to live with this dump forever. It doesn't matter what they show me, what they say, or what lies they continue to tell. This toxic radioactive waste dump, don't belong in our community.
Thank you.
And this is truly a story of David and Goliath, so please choose Team David.
I appreciate that. I am trying to keep everything.
I understand.
Okay. Obviously, this is a subject that's going to have to have a lot more conversation, probably. I think so, both sides. Um, I hope that Mrs. Kearney and her committee can go forward with getting things set up for, uh, further discussion before this goes through. I am definitely, as a person, feel that everybody has, has a right to speak on something. I will again say, the way that it was taken off of the agenda this evening, I don't feel comfortable myself calling the review session. But I hope to see this conversation go further. I know there's a lot more people out there that would have a lot more to say and longer term. So hopefully then everybody will get the chance to do that. And I appreciate everybody coming in this evening. Obviously, it's a, it's a very, a subject that's very touchy to everybody, actually. So thank you, folks. I appreciate the, the public participation. At this time, we will move on to old business. Uh, do we have any old business that we would like to discuss this evening? Uh, yes, Ms. Patrick.
I just want to spend on behalf of Crime Stoppers, big thank you to all the participants that ran in Turkey Truck. It was freezing cold, but they did it. So, and they seemed to have fun. So, thanks to everybody that did it.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick. Any other old business? Uh, yes, Mr. Paul.
I'd like to say thanks to, uh, our service crews while they're out there collecting those leaves. That is a, uh, big job. My neighbor and I, and my wife, I better give her credit, she did most of the work, actually. Uh, we raked all of our leaves to the street. Uh, they came, collected those, and the next day, a huge amount of leaves dropped and my neighbor went right back to work on raking his leaves. So, uh, it's a, it's a tough job. Thanks for getting out to the communities and getting those cleaned up because it does make a big difference. And so, uh, you know, we, we're thinking about you while you're out there, the cold, collecting those leaves.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Paul. Any other old business? Not seeing any. We'll move on to petitions and correspondence received by the clerk.
Mr. President, I received a notice to the legislative authorities of the city of Chillicothe regarding the procedures involved in making objections to the renewal of a liquor permit. All of the liquor permits do expire, uh, at the outset of the year. And, uh, this was distributed to the members of council. If any member of council wishes to, um, start the procedure for an objection to a renewal of a permit, this provides guidance to you as well as, uh, the brochure that's mentioned in there. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Fawson. Uh, new business? Does anybody have any new business they'd like to bring up? Uh, yes, Ms. Gray.
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to have Mr. Florina excused, please.
I have motion to have Mr. Florina excused, seconded by Mr. Hines. Um, roll call on that motion, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
And Mr. Florina's excused this evening? Any other new business? Not seeing any. We'll move on to committee assignments and meeting dates. Um, it's been kind of slow, two weeks. I only have, uh, four items to announce. Um, to finance, a request for legislation supporting the challenge of the constitutionality of amendments to chapter seven eighteen of the Ohio Revised Code relating to the municipal income tax proposed by the Ohio Attorney General Assembly. Uh, engineering, a request for legislation to consider traffic and signal changes related to the opening of the new schools. Uh, to finance, a request for legislation to appropriate funds for various expense lines for year-end budget adjustments, which is on the reading tonight. And to engineering, a request for legislation to appropriate twenty thousand dollars for emergency repairs to a traffic light switch. Correct. At, uh, at Yachtangian North in front of a high school, and that's also on the agenda tonight. Um, and that's all I have. You're announcing a, a committee meeting?
Yes, I would like to announce the committee meeting. It's Wednesday before the budget meeting. It will take place at six fifteen.
Okay, we have a committee meeting before a budget ma, uh, meeting at six fifteen on Wednesday. All right, any other meeting dates? Not seeing any. Uh, we will move on then to our legislation. So, Mr. Fawson, whenever you're ready, item number one.
Second reading of a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Chillicothe to contract with the Ross County Commissioners for the Ross County Building Department to be designated as the city's chief building official and to do the city's commercial building work in two thousand and eighteen to establish an administrative fee and declaring emergency. Second reading.
Item number two is not being read this evening. We move on to item number three.
Second reading of an ordinance appropriating fifty-four hundred eighty-seven dollars for the purchase and installation of LED lighting in the offices of the city auditor and city income tax and declaring emergency. Second reading.
Mr. Pearl.
At this time, I would ask that we please waive the three-read rule.
I have motion waived the three-read rule, seconded by Mrs. Patrick. Roll call on that motion.
Tatman.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
We have waived the three-read rule. Roll call on the legislation, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number four.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating twenty thousand dollars for the repair of the street light located at Chil, I'm sorry, I'm reading that title wrong. For the repair of the traffic control device located at Chillicothe High School at Yachtangie Parkway and North Street and declaring emergency. First reading.
Mr. Tatman.
Thank you. Uh, at this time, I'd like to request that we waive the three-read rule so we can replace this traffic control device and not a street light.
I have motion to waive the three-read rule, seconded by Mrs. Gray. Roll call on that motion.
Tatman.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
We have, we, that motion has passed. Uh, roll call on the legislation, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
And that, uh, and that ordinance has passed. Item number five, please.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating one hundred thirty thousand four hundred fourteen dollars sixty-nine cents for various end-of-year expenses and declaring emergency. First reading.
Mr. Pearl.
At this time, I would ask that we please waive the three-read rule.
I have motion waived the three-read rule, again seconded by Mrs. Patrick. Roll call on that motion.
Tatman.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
That motion has passed. Roll call on the legislation, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.[1720.34]
Corcoran.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number six.
First reading of an ordinance accepting and appropriating $54,759.48 received from the Ohio Mental Health and Addiction Services for use by the Chillicothe Municipal Court Probation Department authorizing the court to participate in the OMHAS program for fiscal year 2018 and 2019 and declaring emergency. First reading.
Uh, Mr. Crowe. I would ask that we please waive the three-read rule.
I have a motion to waive the three-read rule, seconded by Mr. Hines. Roll call on that motion, please.
Tattman.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
The motion has passed. Roll call on the legislation.
Tattman.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number seven.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating $9,097 for the Housing Revolving Loan Fund and declaring emergency. First reading.
Mrs. Neal.[1681.06]